We need them.
Okay.
Yes, please.
All right. We ready to start?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Littleton. This is the Town Littleton Select Board meeting for March 28th. And we are going to be starting with an executive session, as we often do at the beginning of meetings, for two different items and hoping to return to open session and begin our public meeting about 6:30. So I'll resume the reading of the agenda and such at that time, but I'll entertain motions to go into executive session. Mr. Clark?
All right. I move that the select board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public body, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-usent union personnel, fire chief, and to reconvene an open session thereafter.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor require a roll call vote. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
And the Chair is an aye as well. See you in about an hour.
Look at all these people.
I know.
Probably gonna file out with the chief.
Please, Louise.
Good. So I can just, like, look at the distance so my eyes just each one on.
All right. Good evening, folks. We're a little behind here, so I'm gonna want to get us off and running. Thank you. Okay. Welcome all. We, for those in television audience, the select board is out of its executive session, and we're a couple of minutes late on our, beginning our regular public session. I'm Paul Glavy, Vice Chair, subbing for Chuck, who got called away by something, Chuck DeCosa, this afternoon, but we're able to get through the agenda with staff assistance and all the rest of it. We will lead off by doing, as Chuck normally does, the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Clark?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I will just give a sense of the agenda we're looking at after we go through the mail led by Town Administrator Anthony Insaldi. We have some department board updates and requests from the Fire Department, Police Department, Dispatch Unit, PUX, and Recreation, Finance Department, and LCTV. At 7:15 or thereabouts, we will have public input and members' updates, following our usual protocol for that. 7:25, we'll rejoin a topic that's been on most agendas for recent weeks, and that would be our annual town meeting. Warrant articles, recommendations, article order, that sort of thing. Then we have the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator updates. We have a contract in there for the library. We have an issue relative to a vacancy on the school committee, and then a discussion regarding regulation for outdoor dining options. 7:45 is slated for a vote on the minutes, which we have one set of, and anticipated adjournment at 7:50 PM. Perhaps early than that if we get moving, right, Anthony?
Absolutely.
Okay. What do you got for mail?
All right. A few things. First thing is a pet rabies clinic that the show, Boards of Health, is doing with Littleton Animal Hospital. That's on March 26th from 2:00 to 4:00. It's $20 per vaccine, cash or check. The next notice we received is similar that we received a couple of weeks ago about the PFAS was found at the school. This was PFAS that was found at 55 White Street. And the third issue is, we just received a letter from the Conservation Commission to really talk, really raising concern over one of the articles, and we'll be talking about later, as far as eliminating some of the, DOR told us we have to get rid of some of those revolving funds dealing with cell phone tower leases. So a lot of work's been done, and I'll get into it later during the, when we go over the warrant articles, to work with Light and Water Department on that. But that's it right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do we expect members of the Conservation Commission to be with us tonight for that discussion, or should we perhaps schedule them to come in to talk about that?
We could, but a lot is happening. We're trying to solve the problems that I think will be amenable to everybody, so.
Okay. As long as they're kept in the loop at it, as well as us?
Yeah. Yeah. When we get into a warrant article, we can talk about some of the stuff, the mitigation that we're looking at.
Okay. And the board updates and requests? First one. The Fire Department, we have just had an executive session discussion and are ready to act on that.
We are.
Contract with prospective Chief Connor.
Right. So we've been.
Good to see you tonight, Chief.
We've been, we've been working with the chief, and it was the quickest negotiation, I think, ever. Thank you, Chief. So we have incoming Chief Connor's contract for both the chief to execute as well as the chair of the select board, so. You want to come up with a?
Yeah. In fact, if you wouldn't, you can come and say hello to us after, but I'm thinking, Anthony, that the chief didn't really get a chance to address the town at the last meeting of the board. Does it mind maybe giving him an opportunity to? We want us to vote your contract first, and then? Okay. Well, then, we'll, unless the board members have any further comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion on that, so we can get to.
Oh, let me find that.
It's up on the screen, too, Matthew.
Oh, thank you. Moved that the select board vote to authorize select board chair to execute the employment agreement between the Town of Littleton and Fire Chief Robert Connor.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made by Selectman Nordhaus.
Did you just say vice chair? So we can do that tonight?
So, yeah, so amended to vice chair.
Okay. Motion's made and amended by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Great. So I believe it'll be a legal binding contract, even if I sign it tonight, Chief. In fact, I'll do it right now. And while you're there, you know, folks probably did tune in and get a chance to see you interview with us, and probably already as impressed as we were, but by way of introducing yourself to the Town of Littleton, please tell the people of Littleton a little bit about yourself and why you want to be our fire chief.
Sure. Okay. Well, thank you very much for having me, you know, through the chair, through the select board. Thank you to Town Administrator for working with me on the contract and giving that squared away, and thank you all for trusting in me to take over this position. It's something I take pretty seriously, and I'm really looking forward to bringing the Fire Department into the next phase of operation. There's been so many changes in the fire service over the last bunch of years that it's gonna take some different approaches that maybe we haven't seen before to bring us forward into the next generation. Things like retention, things like community involvement. I want to see, you know, us in the schools, us around the community. I want the Fire Department to be a positive face within the community and start being involved in all those kind of things. So I'm really looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to working with everyone here. You know, you'll probably see my family around town as well, so my two boys will be running around, you'll know, because they'll be the two maniacs. And I appreciate the opportunity, so I'm looking forward to getting started, and we're gonna hit the ground running.
Okay. And you live in Holden?
In Holden, yeah.
Right? And that's where you've been for the past, how many years?
The past four years. Yeah, we moved there about four years ago, and then, yeah, we've been there. We live in a nice little piece of property surrounded by DCR and outdoor stuff. We do a lot of stuff outdoors, hikes, walks, fishing, biking, running, all kinds of stuff.
Captain in their department?
Been a captain on Holden, yeah, and.
You teach both at the academy and at Ann Maria College?
Yeah, I've taught, I've taught at the academy, and I'm a adjunct faculty at Ann Maria College as well in their fire science program. I've taught a few different classes, a few different times for them over there. They're going through a little bit of a transitional period right now with their director, but so I'll probably continue doing that, you know, here and there as time allows.
All right. Board members, anything to say additionally? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
And I guess our understanding is that Chief Connor will be signing on the 25th?
25th, correct.
Okay, great. And Chief, Chief Howard's been doing a great job of keeping things together in anticipation view, as of course was for better part of a year Deputy Chief Clancy as well, so, and I'm delighted to see so many members of the department here to greet you, too, so.
Shows the spirit of the department coming through. Think we're gonna bring that even forward even more.
All right. Well, I'm signed. If you want to come up here and sign, Chief, then we'll give you a little round of applause. I'm gonna make you stand in front and take a couple of pictures, that sort of thing, social media and all that.
It's two sets above.
Yep. All right.
Excellent.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. May we present Littleton Fire Chief Robert Connor. Great.
Want to get a picture?
Can I have a picture, Paul?
Yeah.
Sure.
Should we go up front?
Moving right along. Anthony, next is the side letter with the police union. You want to speak to that? I don't believe.
Sure.
Sure. He's not with us any longer. He was here with us earlier.
Yeah, he did, he did have to go, and I told him I would take this for him, the next two.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
What if there's a fire?
Hopefully, there's an engine out there. Okay.
Okay, so the, sorry, pick the wrong documents. The chief, Chief Pratt has been working with the union, and we have a new update to the drug and alcohol policy. The chief has been working on this. He went to a lot of different communities, read theirs, kind of captured some of the best from everybody, put this together. This document has been vetted with Town Council, Labor Council, I should say, Darren Klein, and board has had the opportunity to review it, and the union has agreed to it, and we're ready to execute this document, which will be part of the collective bargaining agreement for both the police and the dispatch, so it's the next two.
Two separate votes, correct?
Two separate ones. Yes, two separate ones.
Board members comfortable with that? Any questions?
No questions.
So we'll be looking for two successive motions. Mr. Clark?
All right. I move that the select board vote to sign the side letter of agreement between the Town of Littleton and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local 204.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
And I move that the select board vote to sign the side letter of agreement between the Town of Littleton and the Littleton Dispatch Unit, Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local 204A.
Second. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And what do we have next, Anthony? We have the PUX and Rec.
PUX and Rec. Alicia Day, our director, is here, and she's gonna talk about a grant that she's got and talk about some 2022 B trades.
Yes. So thank you all for having me here tonight. We have been awarded, it's $14,400, through the United Way After School and Out of School Grants, to assist with the wages for staff, expenses, and programs, supplies, mileage for transportation for our vehicles, and any cost for field trips, entrance tickets, or programming for the rest of this spring session, so that would be March through the end of June, when school ends, essentially. We're very, very thankful to have been accepted for this grant. As a municipal organization, we don't often have that opportunity, so it's been really wonderful to have that. And, you know, it's one of those pieces that, you know, we're one of very many programs within the central Mass region, so again, we feel very honored to be able to be chosen for this. So I would ask the select board for their approval to accept this grant, to support our after-school program, the Five to Eight Club.
Curious. Where is the nearest United Way outfit that you have to deal with?
I don't know the actual location. Yeah, I know. I probably should do, but let me see if they say in here. Pittsburgh looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As I said, I don't think they have any offices in any immediate town I can think of around.
Yeah, they kind of break it up into the, you know, there's different regions, so.
Well, great work in finding it and attaining it. Other board questions?
All right. Ready for a vote? Yep. I move that the select board vote pursuant to Policy 17, approval of grant agreements to accept a United Way After School and Out of School Grant for Spring 2022 in the amount of $14,400 to assist with staff wages and expenses.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Great work as always.
I appreciate it.
Nice.
All right. Next up, Finance Department, Anthony, is that right?
Yes. Alicia's here.
Glad to see you back, Alicia.
Thank you.
Let me just get that signed.
Good evening, Honorable Select Board. I also printed out copies, just in case, for you as well.
Thank you.
To go with the presentation.
Thank you. Very thoughtful.
So this evening, I'm gonna be discussing the facilities budget with current standing and some options to address it. Yes, perfect. So the facilities budget deficit right now is $93,842.56, and then I found out today that a pipe burst. So there's always something.
I thought you fixed it, Anthony. You were working on it.
It was up there. I was just saying the crack was too big. I couldn't, I didn't have the tools.
Wise decision.
Thank you.
So the deficit's primarily due to an increase in electricity for the new library, an increase in police station, increase in gas at Town Hall, and increases in facilities maintenance. The deficit doesn't include the $28,000 in spring HVAC maintenance that we're expecting. So we also realized the town had an unexpected rate increase in fiscal '22, which we're working with the LELWV on, so that we'll know for the future when to expect these increases and can account for them in the budget process. And I wanted you to see from, sorry.
Which one? This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can see the budget, and you can actually see the actual lines in the POs, so the deficit I'm projecting is because of the encumbrances, and that doesn't even include the $28,000 yet.
As, for instance, what's the last comparable from the prior year? Or was, there wasn't any deficit, correct?
No.
Right.
This year's definitely an anomaly.
When did the rates go up?
They went up this fiscal year, but I don't know the exact date. I'll let you know.
Just curious.
Because I went backwards, and I was comparing them to the year before. Any other questions before we move on?
It's pretty clear in the numbers here, and I just want you to affirm that. It really isn't a usage issue so much, right? With the exception of new building space that we may be occupying, other than that, it's, it's just the rates.
It's the rates, and we're, the library is looking into why theirs has increased so much from what it was before, so they're looking into that, and as well as, I was gonna get you on the next slide.
Yeah, okay.
I met with the library trustees, and they're gonna vote on April 7th. I asked them if they would please give $26,000 as a good faith gesture to the town, because we weren't sure what to budget for the new library as far as the figures, and they're a lot higher than we expected them to be when comparing them to last year's. They also requested from me a copy of, like, the oil and heating, so they could have a real true comparative, so I have that, but it's too big of a file to send, so I'm gonna have to print it out or break it down for them. When the solar panels do go up, they're projected to save about 500 a month or 6,000 annually for the town. But right now, the library bills are ranging anywhere from three, four, five, six thousand dollars.
And what was comparable to that in the prior space?
It wasn't, it wasn't near that.
Oh, because it's all part of the same building.
The largest I had, yeah, was nowhere near that, so.
Yeah.
The library's looking.
Mark, one of the library trustees is here with us. Mark, if you want to, anything you want to add?
So.
Always, you know, gotta identify yourself for the crowd.
Mark Grandbacher, Library Trustee. We are actually, once we found out the bills were so high, we actually went back to the architect and the engineer to figure out why. They're 50% to 75% higher than we were anticipating, so they're going to be looking into that. There's emails going back and forth to try and figure out if something's out of tune, so they're gonna look at that.
Is it electricity and gas?
It's all electricity. The building's all, the building has gas for when it gets extremely cold.
Okay.
The rest is all electricity, so.
So then I looked at transferring funds between lines from total other government if there's any available, but 90% to 95% is already spent, so it's not gonna make a big difference in the large deficit we have right now. A reserve fund transfer, as these increased rates in the utilities and maintenance costs were unanticipated, like the breakup stairs and what am I keep finding? Or year-end transfer in May or June to cover the deficit from other departments, and if we wanted to do that, the board may want to implement a spending freeze effective April 1st, so I can kind of get a projection of what's left in each department, what we could move if we went that way. So on the next page, what I showed is the actual deficit reduced by the $26,000 in anticipation of the library trustees voting on April 7th. It would go down to $67,842.56, and then add the $28,000 in anticipated spring HVAC costs, bring it to 95,842.56, and then I don't know what today's pipe breaking will bring it up to. The reserve fund currently has over $220,000 available to be transferred.
When did we start noticing it in the bill cycles? Were, is this something that was growing over the year, or was it always high and?
No, this was something growing over the year that I've been working with, with both the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator on how to handle this, and they've been really analyzing the bills and working with me on how to reduce the POs and where the POs should be to the proper accounts, the proper lines. Anthony sent me a file on how things should be lined up, so we've been working on this continuously. It's just, it keeps growing.
Right.
What are the pros and cons of doing a reserve transfer versus a year-end?
Reserve fund transfer, we could do right away. Year-end has to be done in either May or June. But it's kind of hard to tell without implementing a freeze, because people just keep spending. What is gonna be left to be moved? Like a moving target for me to.
In either direction, has the impact of just, the effective impact of just impacting next year's reserve, free cash, correct, or what we call free cash?
It does. I mean, if, if we were really, really low and we took away from the surplus, if there was surplus, yeah, it would, but in our case, we're in a pretty good position. I just think that these are your two options, either you do a reserve fund transfer, it's quicker, or you wait for the year-end transfer, and we do a freeze, and we kind of watch. And then they'd have to go through Joe and I before they put in a purchase order, so we can really monitor their spending.
Can I?
Sure.
Certainly. This isn't a question for Alicia, it's more for Mr. Ronbacher here, as the library trustee. So we paid, we, the building's LEED certified, right? The new library building. What exactly does that mean? I thought that was gonna make it more energy efficient.
The building is, is built for the energy efficiency. My guess is the HVAC system is improperly calibrated at the moment, and it's using about 50% more, 50% to 75% more power than it should. According to what they, when we put in the system, they projected a certain power usage, and we're 50% to 75% above that. So my guess is it's something improperly tuned in that system.
Okay.
They're gonna come back out and recalibrate. But I'm, I'm not an HVAC guy, so I don't really know.
Right. So did they ever, when we did the LEED certification, did they ever give us, like, an estimate of what it would be without the certification compared to what it is supposed to be with the certification?
The building was built to be LEED certified. There was no concept of with or without.
With or without, okay.
We haven't actually applied for the LEED certification yet. We're going to, that process will start tomorrow, probably, actually. So we haven't applied for the LEED certification pending the solar panels.
Oh, okay.
So once you sign the contract for the solar panels, we can apply for the LEED certification, and that should theoretically up our LEED level, so.
Okay. But we applied for a grant to get the LEED certification or to help offset that cost, right?
No. So by building a LEED certified building, they will give us 2% of our grant, of our MBLC grant, so it's a hundred and some thousand dollars. I don't know, the 120-ish thousand dollars. The solar panels should give us a LEED silver building, which will give us 2.5% of our grant, so $170,000, all part. So we can't, we have not applied for the LEED certification yet. They have all the paperwork to do the LEED, but they haven't done it yet, because if the solar panels go on, it would be more money back for us, so.
Right. That's what, yeah, I guess that's what I was getting at. Okay. So we're still, it's still in process.
It will, they have everything to do with, they just, once the contract for the solar panels are signed, they can say that the, they can effectively do this grant as if the solar panels are on there.
Okay.
So we've been waiting for that to come through before we did the LEED portion of the grant.
Okay. But like you said, you think there's some caliber calibration that's off or something like that? That might be contributing to that problem.
Yes. That's, that's, that's my guess.
Okay.
The architect and the engineering firm are looking into it now.
Right. Yeah, because I think, one thing I found in, on an FAQ, they said they estimated the operational and maintenance cost of the HVAC to be about $39,000, I think, a year. Are you new operational?
I, so when we put in the system, that's on.
It was on an FAQ for the project?
Yeah, that's probably about right.
Okay.
2,500 to 3,000 a month is, I think, what we were thinking the electric cost would be for the building.
Okay.
And they're running much higher than that now.
Right. Okay.
And they shouldn't be. I mean, we're looking into it.
Right.
As soon as it was brought to our attention, we did something.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
And just also, also just for the board, it's not, it's not only library, I mean, just general electricity use has gone up, but also there was some changes to how some heating and lighting components at the DPW garage were previously handled by the Light and Water Department. They changed the HVAC system in order to then allow for that heating system for the garage and lights to be on a different circuit. That now is being billed, so that what normally was about a $2,000 electric bill for DPW became $6,000. So there's a couple of these things that all came together, all at the same time that we've been looking at, and the problem is, because we get that essentially 40 days after the month to then process, you start seeing these, but then we've already, you know, had a cold winter, and those doors coming up and down, our workers are working 24 hours a day, they need to be warmed, and, you know, it's just been sort of a, literally a shock to the system, a financial shock to the system, as we're dealing with a bunch of these things. If we had one or, one or both of these things sort of happened a year after each other, it wouldn't be that big of a bet of a deal, but these two things sort of happened altogether, But these two things sort of happened altogether, the rate increase, new building, and then changing the system over at DPW.
Thanks.
I did some research on LEED if you're, if you're curious, which is, you saw my email?
I didn't read it yet.
Okay.
I did see it.
It's basically.
I appreciate that, Matthew.
Oh, I don't know, 5:30. Basically, the, it aligns so closely to best building practices that getting the certification is, that there's not a whole big difference between a LEED certified building and a non-LEED certified building as far as energy use. Except that we get the 2.5% back from the grant. So that was like the, that was like the, clearly the obvious way to go. But most buildings are very efficient these days.
Okay, thanks.
That's all. We'll get you right back on track. I have a question, Alicia, on the reserve funded. We're entering our last quarter of the fiscal year and, you know, we never know entirely, but we don't have any candidate items that we may otherwise be looking to spend that money on. Anything we're aware of?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Because the stuff of this building, we're going to be using, closing out the old articles, right?
Yes, for town meeting, yes.
I mean, the only thing that would be potentially on our.
Yes, right.
The only thing potentially on the horizon would be, say, about 20 to 25K for spraying at the orchard if we needed to.
Correct, right, okay.
But that, I mean, but that's not sort of, you know, that's a lot less.
If we only have a couple hundred thousand dollars left and you get 900, 90, what is it, 90,000 here and 20,000 there, you know, not too much left, but.
It's not uncommon for what, what Alicia was bringing up as far as spending and stopping departments from issuing POs. A lot of municipalities do that year-end, April 1st.
Years ago, we've done it in the past for different things. And I was just going to say, are these your two recommendations then? Yeah, all right. Then I, anything to add to that? Because I'm inclined to go ahead and ask the board if they want to act on these.
Yeah, no, you know, I think at the very, I think going forward, the freeze right now is probably the best course of action. We don't necessarily use that transfer right now. You know, we still can do that at any point in time, at a future meeting. We just, we're not having any issue as far as paying the bill overall budget-wise, right?
Well, we're over encumbered. So as the bills are coming, we're going to hit that. So my only concern is once I hit that, then I have to come back because legally we can't overspend.
Right, so, so there's a reason to act tonight on both the reserve fund transfer request, especially with FinCon meeting tomorrow night. We might as well do it tonight because they have to prove on it. And the spending, the spending freeze, the amount of impact it's going to have is how early you institute it, right? So. Board have any thoughts on either of those?
No, I'll go with whatever the recommendation is personally.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like six of one, half dozen of another to me.
Without benefit of written text in front of you, you think you could fashion two motions?
Sure. Yeah, probably. I'll wing it.
Mr. Knox, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch you up here. Ready?
No, no. So do we want to do a motion for a reserve fund transfer and the, the spending freeze?
Two separate, I would think, it's.
Okay. And do we want to have a date on the spending freeze?
Recommendation was April 1st.
Oh, April 1st, okay. And so shall I use the $95,842 figure for the reserve fund transfer?
Yes, please.
So I move that the select board vote to authorize a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $95,842.56 in order to cover the facilities budget for 2022.
I heard you say request, not authorize, right?
Yes, that's correct. That's a request.
It's the FinCon's main statutory power, so we want to defer to them properly.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do I get to authorize a spending freeze?
Now you can do it.
You do? Are you sure?
No, but I think.
Oh, I move that the board authorizes spending freeze implementing April 1st to assist with the year-end transfer projection for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Okay, is that properly worded, first? Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Quickly, I'll back to your requests.
Bonjour.
One more topic, right?
Yes, one more topic, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. So what I'm proposing to the board is that we come up with a plan and actually dedicate the funds. Because if we don't have them obligated by December 31, 2024, we lose them. And the federal government kind of wants to see a plan, wants everything written out, everything documented. And so I wanted to make sure there's a plan in place for transparency, make sure that we know. And if anything changes, we can always change it around, but at least for now, if we have a plan in place.
So, so new to what we were, have been talking about is, is the senior center project. So we were able to do some, Alicia was able to do some research. You know, they kept moving, talked about moving the goalpost, the federal government.
As far as what qualified and what didn't.
Right, right. So we did find out that that would, is allowable to use a million dollars towards the senior center project, Shattuck Street project, whatever it may be called. But so that's pleasure of the board. Like Alicia said, it'd be great to have it voted on tonight. It's not required, but you do at some point need to vote on it.
This question I have is how many eyes have had a look at this? Who in the broader town, you know, financial world have, have had a chance to review this recommendation?
Just my, my team and the town administrator.
And tomorrow, you're going to do it for finance, FinCon, just let them know?
Yep, I'm going to include it.
I think in terms of other departments who might be eyeing some of that money. And I'm not opposed to this plan, but I think if other folks haven't had a chance to see it yet, I would prefer to circulate it before we vote on it.
Right, well, I know that, I, I think the board has gotten some feedback from other departments at one point or another when they found out. Word was out that this funding was available. I know we've gotten some feedback over the past few months, I believe.
Yeah.
I just remember getting memos and.
Different people have eyeballed it, not necessarily, you know, not that we've made any commitments anywhere, but I, for that reason alone, I would prefer to see it get circulated so that if somebody wants to, hey, wait, you know, it's vitally important for us to get it for X, Y, Z reason. I mean, offhand, can either of you think of some entity or one of the town departments that's counting on some money here that is not provided for?
I'm thinking one, the community farm was interested in seeing if they could.
I remember that request, yeah.
Yeah. But we looked into that, you know, that's not as easy to do. I don't think it's impossible, but it's, it creates a tremendous amount of work and detail and it's something we'd still have to vet. And they were looking for $10,000.
Yeah, and that's a nonprofit, that's an independent nonprofit, right.
Right.
What were they asking for?
10,000 to support the program.
Yeah.
We did get a memo on that, I think.
We did that in the, in the cultural council too, I was just, but I had.
That was a generic, anything you can get.
Yeah, Alicia was great. She had followed up with them and they didn't have a specific project in mind, so we didn't.
And the sewer project money, does that encompass some of the other, was the water department was looking for, were they looking for something?
There was additional, I think, like Nick emailed us and I asked him if it was in addition to this, and it was. There's another chunk of money from ARPA for the sewer project.
They were, so they were, they were working out, they were working out an agreement, Russell Street, where Chris dotted. And Steve's now is, is up, is getting up to speed with that. So they're just doing some trade-off there. We'll do some, we have to do some roadwork, they have to do some sewer work. So I think that we agreed to, those two departments agreed to handle that another way.
Well, again, I don't have any, I appreciate the work that's gone into this by both you and others. But given the fact that other people have been eyeing it, I would prefer that we circulate the draft and say, this is what we're considering doing and then vote on it formally.
Sure, agreed, yeah.
That's fine.
You can do that.
Okay.
I just want to point out one thing to the chair.
You can point out as many things as you want, Alicia.
The 61 police officer was already voted by your honorable body, so that can't be changed.
Right, that was one of the original requests, but we've already.
Correct. And the signage trailer board for 21950 had originally been charged to CARES, but CARES rejected it, so I had to charge it to ARPA.
So we've already got it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we already got it.
Okay.
I was going to say, it's a strange, I don't know.
Yeah, that was another move the goalposts because they were allowing that on the CARES. And then they said, well, we're not allowing it on the CARES. So I says, well, how did you allow it before and not now? And we just couldn't get any answers. So we tried to make the argument with them, but it didn't work. So, but we do have to pay for them.
The Department of Revenue is doing desk audits, I guess, at different municipalities, isn't coming down and looking at everybody's CARES and backup. So they said it's really important if they authorize a cost to save. They email or paperwork proving it because sometimes somebody at the state may say yes and other times they may say no.
Good to know.
Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Anthony, Community Television, correct?
Yeah, so this, there's two IMAs that we normally would approve right now. One is for LCTV between Littleton and Boxborough.
IMA intermunicipal agreement, right, okay.
Correct. And the other one is the animal control. That one came in after we had already prepared the package. So council, Joe's reviewed the IMA and Mark Corey, it came from him and Kirby. So we feel comfortable moving forward with that.
Any significant changes from the last agreement?
Just a little bit, prices increased as far as we, I think we went up, was it like 3,000, Joe, or somewhere around there? So we just increased it 3,000 based on a little bit more demand and usage that they're requesting.
Board members, any questions?
None, none from me.
That requires a vote, right?
Yes, it does.
All right. I move that the select.
And a signature. I'm sorry.
Signature is already, probably shouldn't have signed it first. Move that the select board vote pursuant to Mass. General Act, Chapter 40, Section 4A, to authorize execution of an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Boxborough for LCTV with a term from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023.
motions made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say my by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, great. All right, not too far behind schedule. We're public input, members updates. Members of the public, Madam Clerk.
Good evening and thank you for having me. I'm here this evening representing several of the members of staff at the town hall. I'd like to read a letter of support to you, the members of the select board. Dear Select Board, the town of Littleton has gone through tremendous growth and positive changes these past few years. Even under the difficult, even under the most difficult of circumstances, in part due to the leadership of Town Administrator Anthony Ensalvi. Not only has Anthony guided, personally supported, and directed us through these changes, he has done so with little to no recognition of his tremendous efforts. Anthony is approachable and always willing to listen and collaborate with departments. He is responsive to public input and concerns. It is for these reasons that we are writing this letter. Unity to offer our support to Anthony Ensalvi and the residents of Littleton who benefit from his leadership. It has come to our attention that Anthony is a finalist in the town of Winthrop for the town manager position. Many of us are shocked and saddened by this news. Unfortunately, there has been some contention recently and subsequently, opinions have been taken into consideration that are not the majority. We would like to share our perspective, perspectives and personal experiences on why we feel Anthony is the right leader for Littleton and why efforts should be made to keep him here. The following are examples of Anthony's leadership and accomplishments in Littleton. Guiding employees and the community through the COVID epidemic. Being one of the first towns to organize a vaccine clinic for adults and children. Instrumental in negotiating future development of the 550 King Street site. Recruiting key department head positions that were vacated. Responsible for the annual town report recognition award. Responsible for the distinguished town budget and finance report award. New library project completion. Sewer project. Plans for the new EHS building. The town administrator role affects all employees as well as the residents of Littleton. We need to trust and ensure the position, person is able to do their job and allow them the space and opportunity to succeed. This cannot be accomplished without mutual trust and respect. The employees on this letter fully support Anthony's leadership and vision for Littleton to continue to be the great community it is. We ask the select board to take this information into consideration when planning next steps. Respectfully, town hall staff. We got news that Anthony was a finalist on Friday. And several of us got together and put this letter together today. Not everybody has signed it, but we also didn't, weren't able to get to everybody at town hall. One of the people that didn't get a chance to sign it was Diane Dickerson, who was away. But she did call me today and said that if she was available, that she would have signed that. But as you can see, there are several staff members here that, you know, have signed it. And as I said, but we weren't able to get to everybody in all the departments. But we would like you to, you know, keep in mind that we are, many of us are in support of Anthony staying. We would like you to do everything in your power to keep him.
Thank you very much. I would also say that it's, it's always appropriate and welcome to get letters of support for employees, managers, you know, people as visible as a town administrator. And, but at the same token, people's personal decisions on positions and our own, you know, we have guide, right, guidelines on our own ability to speak to personnel issues in public. But I'll say this much, it's, it's good to see good things being said by the employees about the town administrator and welcome that. So, but thank you. Some of those things, we don't really have a lot of control over, but the, the input and recognition is certainly welcome. Board members, anything to?
Thank you for your letter. I, you know, we've been requesting that our chair schedule Anthony's performance review for quite a while. I wish we could get to that and discuss, but I appreciate your, I appreciate you all getting together.
We just felt it was needed to be said, that's all. Thank you for your letter.
I certainly welcome this letter. I think it's, it's timely, thank you very much.
All right, any other public input here? I see in the back, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and other members. You can always sign.
First of all, while we're very familiar with who you are, our protocol.
Okay, is George Alton Sanders Senior here? 672 Great Rowan.
72 Great Rowan, yes.
And sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. Just sort of kind of like to say that, you know, it's always been said, sort of kind of piggybacking a little bit what Madam Clerk said there. Normally, when you have a good employee, they say the employer will always find a good job for it. And I think that, you know, we've been through some trials and tripulations here in this town over the past few months here. But I certainly thank highly of the, excuse me, of the town administrator and assistant town administrator and this board. However, what I want to say about the public input here, I want to get to the point that when you talk about this warrant list. I sent each of you a letter that I had the town administrator convey to you about the senior center being on the warrant for an article to seek out construction. Article to go and look at the contract for not surpassing $15 million. And if need be, when the library was in the process of planning and building, they had to cut back a little bit on the library. So it's very possible there's some things in the senior center that probably could be cut back. And like I said, roll up your sleeves and. And like I said, roll up your sleeve then do a little hard work in there and with the finance committee and others that are involved and try to get this thing through. I, I'd like to know, why is it that you can't put an article on the warrant that will allow you to vote on it for the sole purpose of going through and applying for a loan? I find it be no different than if you was out there applying for a pre-loan to build a home or whatever the case is. I know the state had requirements when it comes to issuing contracts for supplies and service that you have to find those, you have to follow those guidelines under procurement guidelines. I am aware that the state and the feds do that. But to go out and set amount to get a loan for, I'd like to know where is that prohibit to do? If it is, I'd like to know what it is because I believe that you could put an article on there to limit, I know in the past they put articles on the warrant not to surpass a certain amount of money. And my concern is, is that the federal government reserve is increasing the rate to borrow money. They just went up a quarter percent and they said that they probably go into expedited by going to half a percent because previous, when they went to the quarter percent up, they had mentioned it would go up six more times during this year. So costing the taxpayer more money if you don't get out there and get it in before these rates get bumped up by the federal government. So that's my concern. So when you come to the warranty on that item, I'd like to understand that because my concern is that the town need to be on the conservative side with regards to saving this town as much money as possible can in building a new project, a new building or whatever the case may be. That should be one of the main concern is to get in there and get approval while the rate's down, while we have good standing and with our credit, the AAA rating, that means something to this town and it helps you to get better rates out there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. As you pointed out, we do indeed have the warrant articles coming up on our agenda a little bit later. And that one particularly, or that possibility of that one is definitely going to be up for some discussion. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Anybody else? Anybody else out there? Are you monitoring Zoom land? Are we still doing that or not? Or do you have to show up and talk now?
Thankfully, no.
Okay, all right. All right. Then board member updates. Ms. Napoli?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to just mention to the board, as you recall, we had, actually, when I first got on the board, one of our goals was to find ways to combat the opioid crisis here in Littleton. And through that, we did form the Littleton Coalition Against Addiction. And we do have a wellness committee in town that is quite a large group with the school system. So I'm on an email chain with that group. And one of the things I just wanted to mention to the board was that I had watched a special, Brian, Brian Gubel does it on HBO on Saturdays. And it was called Young Injured Athletes and Opioids. It aired in February 2022. And it was really upsetting and interesting to me. And it spoke, it had stories about all these college athletes and how they're getting addicted to opioids. They get an injury, they're on a team, they don't want to give up a game, they want to keep playing. And so it had interviews with all, all these athletes, some who experienced permanent disabilities, others who actually overdosed and ended up passing away. So I mentioned this to the wellness group and said to them, I asked them if this was something that they would consider maybe implementing at the high school into the curriculum. And so I did hear back from Steve Mark and members of the committee, so they are going to be looking into that. So I just wanted to give the boards a heads up on that. I'm looking forward to see what they come back with because I think it would really be helpful for our student athlete population if they do end up implementing something like that. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is April 2nd is the 75th anniversary of the DFW in Littleton, the Veterans of Foreign War, is located on 21 Taylor Street. And they are having a celebration on Saturday, the 2nd. Doors open at 3 o'clock. The public is welcome if anybody wants to stop by and just pop in and say hello or stay and attend. They're going to have a little ceremony around 3 o'clock. They're going to have, the Friends of Littleton veterans are putting on a buffet and providing some food catered by Al Forno. So the public is welcome if they want to stop by.
Terrific.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Nordhaus? Nothing for me tonight. Okay, Mr. Knox?
I'll sit, thank you.
Okay. Two items. Maybe you can help me out here, Anthony. There is a blood drive somewhere in Littleton tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow, right here at Town Hall.
Town Hall?
I believe it's 9 to 3, does that-
9 to 3?
Well, that's what we said.
All right, anyway. Come give blood. Always, always the public needs it. And what could be more convenient than to come right down here at Town Hall on Tuesday, the 29th? And I think it was, yeah, 9 to 3. Hopefully, if not, Anthony will correct us on that. On the other point, while Anthony is looking that up or confirming-
9:30 to 3.
9:30 to 3, and that's right here at Shattuck Street.
Right here at Shattuck Street.
Okay. I know both Cindy and I were able to attend virtually. The Westford Business Association had a presentation last week, which they do annually. I caught the last one by last year's, after the fact, watching the video of it. But the town managers and administrators from the area, each were giving presentations on activity in their towns. And I think Anthony acquitted very well for the various projects we, we do here, have been doing over the past year in Littleton, things that are ongoing. And it's real interesting. You know, it's great to, I'm sure you're doing the same thing, Anthony, Cindy as well, you know, grabbing ideas, potential ideas from other towns. And hopefully, after watching our presentation that Anthony made, that maybe some towns would be similarly feeling, well, we better do X, Y, and Z that Littleton's doing. It was, it was a great forum. I know you sent something out to the board, but I don't think, did you send out the, the-
Your PowerPoint?
The PowerPoint?
Yeah, I think you did. I remember seeing that in the email, yep.
I would have put that on the website, too.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, that's actually a really good idea. Yeah.
It's a nice little succinct summary of the various economic development, infrastructure projects, some of the other things going on.
I must have missed a guy. I don't remember getting it. Could you send it to me? Weekly update on Friday.
Oh, that's where I saw it, yep.
But the PowerPoint was in there as well?
Yeah, that was an attachment.
Well, I saw it live, so I couldn't look at it. All right. Onto town meeting, Anthony. We ready for that, are we?
We are.
All right.
All right, so three items that we're going to be, that the board has to do tonight. We're going to review town meeting warrants, warrant articles, and we're actually going to open the warrant and amend a couple and then add a couple of warrant articles. Then we'd be looking on, if you're ready-
Good, we do have the ability to add articles, right? Because I-
Yeah.
Consider one.
And then vote on the article recommendations and then on the order. So the first, first article that we're looking to amend is Article 12, which is the 31 Shattuck Street slash senior center project. And you can see from the arrow on the screen up there, the number two. What we just left off there is we want to acquire 31 Shattuck Street by, you know, friendly eminent domain. And then we also want the ability to sell it. So that wasn't originally in that article. So we'd like to add that number two on that one.
Now, to that end, and if we were to consider the borrowing article for the senior center, that would be a separate article than this article, correct?
It's a separate article. We're, we're looking to, yes, we, the, yes, we'll get into that afterward.
Okay, so you already had that on your, your agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's the design money, yes. The next article is Article 22. And this is special act related to cell tower leases that passed in the, earlier in, in the correspondence from the Conservation Commission. This is one of the articles that, that was brought to our attention by the department around you that we needed to do some work to it. So we originally had the top section there. And then we had to add the word in and then add a two to that. And that's the language there.
So for, for board members looking on your computer, it's not in the packet because we had a meeting this morning with town council-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is-
Light and Waters Council, and Alicia was on as well. They recommended this as a way to dealing with one of these issues as far as adopting a section of state statute and then creating a stabilization to take those monies and put it in.
Okay.
So, because it, we may or may not be successful with the special legislation. This was another sort of belt and suspenders thing. But unfortunately, it was late in the day, so it's not in the packet.
Okay, I agree.
There may be in a way, an opportunity to address it other than the special legislation, special legislation. Because once we have that, then we'd have to go back to them if we wanted to make any changes. So we're looking at actually an intermunicipal agreement between the select board, the water commissioners, and maybe Conscom. So the bottom line is that everything that we were doing in the past as far as the money coming in and being distributed, we want to continue that process. We just have to do it the way the DOR is telling us to do it. So that's what we're working on. And like Joe said, we had a meeting this morning and it's an ever-changing process that we're still trying to work through.
So I know we got a letter from Conscom that was just saying, you know, basically supporting the continued use of the funds as appropriate. I just want to make sure that they're part of that process so that they're, because they're invested in it and that they can do with those funds what they have always done.
That's why town council talked about the IMA between the two boards and maybe even adding in Conscom. So it's memorialized that they continue to get what they get.
Looks like Alicia has something to add to this.
Yes, I met with Amy and Conscom and I explained the accounting process, what is happening with DOR. And once it gets closed to free cash, we could put it in a stabilization, which matches this language, and Conscom was okay with that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So that, the issues raised in their letter should be resolved then?
I think it will be resolved.
Thank you.
So we would, we're actually going to be eliminating an article and down the road, it's Article 20, so we renamed this one as Article 20. And this is just appropriation of transportation network company funds. So this is the right here, revenue that we get annually. And that just would allow us to use the funds without further appropriation or?
This is the appropriation.
This is the appropriation for going forward.
So in the fall, Chris Doddard had brought, here's what I'm using these funds for. This then allows for us to, gives us the appropriation to then use those, for those purposes.
And Article 27, which is the, and Alicia talked about this earlier, operating budget line item transfers. Do you want to take this? Want to?
Yeah, so this article just, it goes over so that I can move money between lines at the end of the year as, as necessary-
Yeah.
-to cover any deficits within the budget.
Do we know of any significant-
It's just to give us flexibility as we deal with some of those facility things. If we find, you know, like something up, the pipe that's in here, right? We never know what could happen.
Yeah, I'm just curious whether there's any identified heavy overages or underages here that need to be addressed, other than the utility.
The only one other than utilities is, is Snow and Ice.
So, and that's annual.
Correct.
And the Municipal Modernization Act allows us to do this anyways, but this is, I think, another, town council said it doesn't hurt, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate having it. I'm more interested in the backstory, you know, are we projecting things correctly or are things trending away from our projections, that sort of thing? And if we're not seeing a lot of activity here, that's good news on our projections,
yes, very good news.
And more than likely, we'll just be passing over it. It's, it's really just for more flexibility for us.
Right, yeah. Right. So that's the amendments and then the new articles to insert. So you have your motion, it's up here, Matthew, that we made, needed to make the changes in the levitation, so.
Okay. Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Ready for it? I am on this. And we'll preclude our addressing a couple of the topics.
Yeah, we're still going.
Move that the board vote pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and Town Code, Section 41-1, to reopen the warrant for the Monday, May 2nd, 2022 annual town meeting, to insert Articles 20 and 27, and to amend and insert Articles 12 and 22 on the annual town meeting warrant, and to immediately close said warrant.
Second.
Okay, motions been made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. Any further discussion? Quarry, by closing this now, I think it doesn't prevent us from reopening it if we're going to have a discussion on something or?
Want to hold that pot and then do that at the end?
Can I offer a friendly amendment to hold off the immediately closed said warrant?
So amended?
Okay.
Second.
If that's motion, the amendment made by the chair and seconded by Ms. Napoli is accepted, then the motion as amended. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
So we're going to go through the recommendations. And because the numbers changed, I, I know we waited till the end last year and then made the one vote. I would just recommend that we kind of just do it for each article.
As we go along?
Yeah.
Asking a lot of Mr. Nordhaus over here.
I know. So Article 1 is town officers standard article. It's in every town meeting.
So do we want a motion for each of these? So I move that the select board vote to support Article 1?
Second. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Article 2 is the annual report.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 2?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We don't, we've already done it water over the bridge. But some of those, I don't think we've even, we've just haven't put a support of whatever. We put it on the warrant, but don't-
We don't recommend-
Right, yeah.
Pro or con for like bills of prior years and-
Well, really prior years, yeah, but these, these offices and annual reported, it's kind of-
Did we have recommendations last year on those?
If we pull up the report-
If it's thrown out last year, we wouldn't include it.
Right. All right. We might as well just roll forward.
All right. Article 3, bills of prior year, we don't have any, so no recommendations needed. He was ready.
It's a big one, though. Article 4 is a big one.
I'm not going to read it, so.
Article 4 is the budget. Happy to read it, but I think that the board is aware of the budget.
Yep. Good budget, too.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 4?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Article 5 is the revolving funds.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 5?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Article 6 is the FY23 Water Enterprise Fund Operating Budget.
I move that select board vote to support Article 6?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Article 7 is the FY23 Sewer Enterprise Fund Operating Budget.
I move that select board vote to support Article 7?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Article 8 is the FY23 Park, Wrecking Community Education Enterprise Fund Operating Budget. And this is allowing them to use the existing funds that's in there because they're going to be a revolving fund after that.
Move that select board vote to approve Article 8?
Second. I recommend.
Did I say that? Sorry.
To approve.
Recommend to support Article 8.
May, Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. Yeah, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'm getting punchy.
Surprised I caught it.
Article 9 is the capital, FY23 capital items from available funds. This is a select board finance committee.
I move that the select board recommend Article 9, support Article 9.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Article 10, this is the Shaker Lane feasibility study, the MSB, the necessary article from the MSBA to, to continue on in the statement of interest and with the feasibility study.
I move that the select board vote to- I move that the select board vote to support Article 10?
Second. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Article 11 is a board of water commissioners. This is the Water Main Project. It's a borrowing article, it's $2 million.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to support Article 11?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Article 12, which is the amended article, this is the 31 Chattock Street Senior Center Project. I'm just going to go through each number just to make sure that those at home understand what this article is about. I think there's some confusion out there.
All right, well, this, this is precisely where I was hoping to have a further discussion about how we're approaching this. And I appreciate, and I defer to Cindy at any point, Cindy and Chuck were the lead folks on our board for it, yourself, Liz, others have been, put a lot of work in, but getting a lot of feedback from the town who've heard our earlier discussions on it and that they understand that we still have the site issues, but they know it's going either over there or over there on, you know, on the property. And they know that the estimates came in higher than what we were hoping for, but they were trying to whittle them down. And the feedback I've been getting, I was, I was pretty impressed that people were paying attention, got it, wanted us to vote, you know, a, not, not fire off from what Mr. Sanders was suggesting, a not to exceed number on a borrowing. And I think there's a couple of reasons why we might want to consider that beyond the fact that, you know, it's pretty much a known at this point, other than some variables that we've identified, explained, and they're going to get worked out one way or the other. And those, I think the reasons why we might want to act now is we're in a position to act now. There aren't any unknowns that are going to prevent us from getting, asking the town for its approval. But similar to what Mr. Sanders highlighted, and I spoke to Sean this morning, earlier the treasurer, to confirm this, and coincidentally in the hallway was Chairman of the Finance Committee, Gary Wilson, I spoke to him as well. There's, there's no, no harm in giving the treasurer maximum flexibility in this, you know, borrowing market to act sooner rather than later. So if we don't have that vote in hand as of the annual town meeting, then we've got to wait for another town meeting to get it, which could be the fall, it could be several months later and several rate increases later. And similarly, and I know Anthony has had conversations with our legislators, we are, we have had as a board discussions about aggressively pursuing line item, state budget line item request for some help with this. And once again, we're in a better position to attain that if we have a vote in hand from the town on the project. So if you know we're going in this direction anyway and we can set a, you know, a cap on it, you know, all the while trying to drive it on the ultimate cost, I would say, I would argue that we're in a, we should be asking for the borrowing authority based on what we think we're going to spend on the project, based on what we know about it at this point. And I obviously open this up for discussion, but perhaps Ms. Napoli, since you have been a lead on this, your thoughts first?
Right. No, and I appreciate you mentioning this and I appreciate the comments made by Mr. Sanders. We, and as Mr. Sanders had pointed out, we have historically done this in the past on other projects and given the climate, the financial climate and what's going on, it, it makes sense to me to do, you know, to maybe consider, ask the residents to consider the not to exceed. At this time, to your point, you know, we, we've kind of firmed up the project, it's either going to, you know, be on the slope site, maybe it's going to be on the tennis court site, you know, we're going to work through all of that. But at this point, I think it makes sense to do that and to put us, put us in that position as to, you know, instead of waiting, you know, another year from now, another year from now, keep kicking it down the road where who knows what's going to happen, you know, financially. If our finance team supports doing so, it makes sense to me, so.
And a point I should have added, thank you, is that I would rather be in a position where we have it on the warrant and if for some reason, by town meeting time, we had information that suggested we withdraw it, we could do that.
Right.
Than not be in a position to act on it.
Right.
Are we, are we comfortable with a, with a price tag?
Well, that's the part we'd have to get a, you know, a consensus on. What would be the appropriate not to exceed number?
So.
This is kind of what we did with the sewer last fall, is you wanted a more immediate.
Right. So, yeah, in talking to Sean, I, I think the dollar amount that we were trying to stick within the levy would be a $10 million cap on borrowing. Everything else that we'd be looking to pay, which is why you jacked up the stabilization, the senior center stabilization, why we talked about adding a million dollars of ARPA, why we.
We've got about three million bucks in there already, right?
We had three, yeah, three million.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, three million was in there and then.
We might be putting another million in.
Then it's, well, it's, I think there's two point, two point, is it up to five point something? I forget the exact dollar amount, but it's around, a little over five million that will be in there. Then if ARPA was about six million, so $10 million is what we can, what we can handle under the levy.
And still have the intention of bringing down those estimates from what the architects.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so the advantage of doing that is, you know, it could shave a month or two that if we're ready. So we're, we're doing a plan B of the feasibility and looking at the area across from the library now. So, once we do that, once we have a price determined, if everything's going good, then we, we have the authorization to go into design. We already got that million dollar authorization at a prior town meeting. We're asking to up that just in case it comes in that we, the design. So we're looking for a little bit more flexibility going from the one to 1.5. So that article on the end, adding that to maybe a number seven, Paul, and somehow we'll have town council craft that on a bar, construction borrowing not to exceed $10 million.
Okay. Practically speaking, can we borrow, can we get, take advantage of low rates without a fully designed building?
Yeah, we can't, you know, we, Sean and the finance team has done a great job, right? If you remember about a few months ago, you, you find it, we just signed a bunch of documents. We financed all our debt and took advantage of the lower rates. So we, we can't go out and borrow without having a project. They just won't allow that. But what this does, it, what, what Paul's saying and what Mr. Sanders is saying is if, if we're ready, you know, two months early than the October town meeting, then we can go right at it and before another rate increase. Other than that, we'd be looking at authorization at the fall town meeting to look for construction money.
Makes sense.
Certainly, I, we welcome that because we can continue to roll right through.
Yeah. I mean, regardless of when the vote takes place, nobody's going forward.
No.
For borrowing until it's ready anyways.
Right.
But it does give the flexibility to get the best rate.
I understand, no, that makes sense, yeah, okay.
And it does have to come before, any borrowing has to come before the select board to approve. So there's another opportunity to, you know, hear everything and continue to hear updates with the project.
So you had discussed that number, I assume, with finance team or?
I had discussed that, yeah, when the first number came in and.
That was the piece of it that I had the least confidence in, not knowing what number to attach to it that both satisfies all the known uncertainties and, and existing pools of money that are out there.
I mean, is FinCom going to want to weigh, FinCom is going to weigh in on this?
They're going to vote to recommend.
They are?
Favorable or unfavorable action on the article?
Okay.
Yes, just one member, but as I said, I did, I did run and carry this morning, told him what, you know, the logic behind it and what the discussion was likely to be tonight. And he welcomed it. Sorry, I mean, that's, that's far from a affirmative vote.
Sure, but, you know. He didn't claim you were crazy.
No.
Not about that, anyway.
Well, there you go, let's stipulate.
So, so we can make that.
I'm in favor of that.
Addition.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
And, and I, actually, we're going to have another bite at the apple. I, I don't feel 100% comfortable getting this, you know, nailed down until Chuck has some say into things too, obviously, he's the chair.
So you don't have to take the recommendation on this? We can do it as a handout?
Yeah.
You can vote to amend that article with that not to exceed number. We will do that, we'll craft the article, you'll have opportunities before town meeting to give a recommendation on it. Is that what you're asking?
Well, no, not exactly, because I, you know, if we're at a point where we can add it into the warrant with the rest of the language, are you saying it would be a handout as an amendment to it or?
For your recommendation, if.
Yeah, well, that almost draws more attention than, than necessary.
Well, I mean, the, the other option would be just scheduling a quick Zoom to discuss that one thing with the full board, because we don't have to go to printer for another week.
Okay, that's, that's the, the real deadline we're working against.
Correct.
The printing schedule.
Yes, we can do something next, next Monday if we want to do it quick.
Okay.
Personally, personally, I'd like it to look like every other article on there and two, I'd want to make sure Chuck has his say on it, so.
It's slated to go to the printer Tuesday.
Do a quick, want to plan for a quick?
Yeah, whatever it's convenient.
I won't be here.
Sure.
Yeah.
You can take it from the beach.
Hopefully I'll be on a plane. But I'm, I'm in fully supportive of it if you guys want to go ahead and do that.
All right.
Without me.
And I'm assuming everybody's on board with me, like, you know, it's important enough topic and Chuck was one of the integral people to it. If he has a different thought on it, I want to make sure it's considered before we vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm on board.
Any preferred time, just so we can plan? You don't have to wait for 6:30 if you don't want to, if it's a quick meeting, if we want to do it.
I mean, we could do it if it's just a Zoom meeting, we could do it in the morning before everyone goes off.
Right.
We could do it before you leave town, frankly.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, yeah. If you want to do it in the morning, that's fine.
That's fine.
All right. Circulate something maybe.
Monday the 4th?
It's still Monday the 4th, what, what do we say, 8?
Sure.
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 Just confirm it with an email and all that sort of.
Yeah.
5:00 AM, Chuck?
You're not going to be back yet?
I'm on vacation.
All right.
8:00 AM. I might be up. I might be up. See?
Can we just have to, maybe, should we schedule over email?
It could be anytime, I just figured before work.
Why don't we let Anthony circulate something tomorrow? That way people can have, you know.
We don't know what Chuck's availability is.
Yeah, that's true.
That's fine.
Okay.
Sorry, if the board doesn't mind, I, we did have a hand raised out there, so I would, quickly, you did have a chance to speak to it earlier, Mr. Sanders, but if you want to make a point.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I wanted to say was that when I met with Anthony and Chuck previously, we talked about this situation and he's saying the same number that was brought to me at that time was 10. One thing I wanted to make sure is that when we present this at the town meeting, we let the people know that what we have in Estro. And let them know that what we are asking them to give us preapproval for on the construction loan is the 10, because we can do that within levy. So it's not going to be outside the levy. So if we get the money from the state, they're able to trim this down with saying if they do it over here, they probably get between a million and a half probably. So I think the thing is that if we give them good information, so it's simpler and they understand to the point, I think we'd be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are our marching orders.
Do you, do you want me to go through these quick?
Uh, sure.
All right, so, so number one is the eminent domain. You know, just, there's a lot of chatter, we're not knocking down a house, you know, that's not the intention, the house.
We're not taking someone's house away from them.
We're not taking someone's house away.
On the market, soon as we take what we need out of it.
Exactly. So this is, this is, you know, and he's going to get what he asked for, actually probably more by the end of the day, so, and he's met with us and he's, he's, was totally fine. So it's, it's not this hostile eminent domain, that's not.
Haven't heard much of that, by the way.
No, just, just it was a little bit of feedback, yeah.
It's out there. It's out there.
So.
Walking on happiest streets, it is.
Yeah. So number two is to be able to sell it, soon as we get it, where we do, we take that land that we need to, add someone to the back, then we would go about and do a Food 30B, we'd go out and sell that. We transfer $700,000 from free cash to the senior center, I'm sorry, for the purpose of acquiring 31 Chattock Street. So, yeah, that would include all, all costs that we anticipate with, that comes with that, with surveying and so forth. Transfer from the certified free cash, 1.355651 million into the senior center stabilization fund. Number five is transferring another 816,955 to the senior center stabilization fund. So that's that 2.2, 2.3.
Would we be adding the ARPA money to this list as well or not?
We would do that another time if that's what the board wants to do, yes, but, but no, we wouldn't be adding it to the, because we can't add it to a stabilization fund, we can pay for expenses, so.
Oh, right.
If that was the case, just say that, that we, we got an earmark, we might be looking at using that money for design and not going out to borrow for the design, you know, so more to come on that. But that's another 2.2, 2.3 added to the three, so that's 5.5, which is fantastic. And then number six is what I mentioned earlier, as far as the, we already had the million dollar authorization to borrow for design, we're just looking to bump that up to 1.5 in case the costs come in a little bit higher, that we wouldn't have to wait for another town meeting. And then seven would be construction funding, borrowing article not to exceed $10 million.
So do we need a motion to amend that or do we just need to approve?
Um, we didn't, so, yeah, why don't we, we approve as amended, just like we did the first time when we did those other articles?
Okay.
So to further amend Article 12. And want to hold off the recommendation until Monday night?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or until whenever we do the Zoom with Chuck.
Right, whatever that, yeah.
So I move that the select board vote to further amend Article 12 to include.
Not to exceed $10 million.
Paragraph 7, which specifies not to exceed $10 million in borrowing authority.
For construction.
For construction.
Second.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli to amend. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Sanders.
And we'll take a full vote on the recommendation on the articles as a whole when we get Chuck in the loop.
Right, we'll do that Monday, yeah. So we'll just skip over that one for right now. Certainly before we go to the printer.
Right.
Article 13 is capital transfers, so these were all previously approved articles at town meeting for capital work. As you can see, one of them goes back to 2013. So normally our policy is, is two years, you have two years to do a project. Other than that, it's time to close out the old capital articles, they don't stay there forever. So we're looking to close out those capital articles, which would allow us to have 252,000 dollars to address the space needs here at Town Hall with some movements into the old library, et cetera, and repurposing some of the existing space, fixing broken pipes as they come up. And then the other 50,000 dollars would be for a feasibility study for the orchard buildings. And actually, I don't even know if we, yeah, the building feasibility study in the orchards, we did specify that.
Okay.
That's Article 13, yeah.
Uh, move that the select board vote to recommend Article 13.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
So Article 14 is the CPC budget, that's the money that's going into the various buckets. The projects that, that they approved is 30,000 for open space and rec plan. 99.50 for historic resource reservation for Phase Two at the West Lawn Cemetery Conservation Project. And 20,000 dollars for recreation reserves for feasibility study relative to new tennis and sports courts. So for that, people that are concerned that we're losing tennis courts, we're going to address that here too. So we're going to look at feasibility and look at other areas in towns where we can make new tennis courts. And maybe several, separate pickleball courts and not being incorporated into a tennis court. So we're on that too.
Move that the select board vote to recommend Article 14.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Article 15 is an every year LCTV, FY23 LCTV receipts reserved for appropriation from PEG Access Fund.
Move that the select board vote to recommend Article 15.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Article 16 is our FY23 compensation grid. What that's going to do is it's going to increase the employee salaries for next year, which is, as already previously approved in the collective bargaining agreements with three out of the four unions at one and a half percent for FY23.
And there weren't any other changes in there, personnel committee stuff was all done last year, right?
Right, right, Joe, there's nothing other than the change in the grid, right, nothing?
No.
Yeah.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 16.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, going to give Mr. Knox one of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Knox, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Article 17, we're continuing to work with our one union that we have yet to reach an agreement, we're hoping to do so. We want to be able to make sure that they're compensated as quick as possible. So we have an article on here to fund collective bargaining agreements.
We can't really do a vote on recommendation on it because we don't.
Right, that one you would pass until town meeting if we were so lucky to be able to get this done, yes. Article 18 is, this is an every year article too, it's use of the debt exclusion stabilization fund for FY23 excluded debt. So this is previously debt exclusion that was authorized by town meeting. And it's kind of softening the burden by throwing some money in and kind of kicking in some towns' funds to lessen the impact on the taxpayer.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 18.
Wait for it.
Second. I'm going to say the article dies for one of a second. Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox, I guess I would. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Article 19, it's a debt exclusion stabilization fund, putting some money from free cash, approximately 500,000 dollars, into the debt exclusion stabilization fund.
Move that select board vote to support Article 19.
Second. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I mentioned earlier that we were going to eliminate Article 20, this is the eliminated Article 20, I just wanted to show you.
Didn't you add in another article?
Yes, we did, and we took something to put in its place.
Okay, all right, but that throws up what we're looking at in terms of the number that we'd had?
No.
No, that's why we put it into the 20 spot.
So the new article went into the same spot, gotcha, all right. So there is.
Because it would have did that, yeah. Yes, there is an Article 20, just not the one that we previously had discussed.
Already forgotten what it is.
There you go, perfect. It's exactly what we wanted.
Yeah.
So, my answer 21? Article 21 is depositing from free cash 816,955 dollars into the capital stabilization fund.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 21.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
So Article 22 is one that you amended earlier, that's the cell tower leases that we're working on. So I would hold off and maybe we can have this ready for Monday, a little luck, so we'll pass on that.
What about the new 20, Anthony? Do we have?
We approved that earlier.
Okay, so we did give a recommendation on that? I know we, we know we put it on the warrant.
I don't think we recommended those four, that we, we just added them to the warrant.
Right.
Want to go back to those out?
After, whenever you want to do it, I just don't want to miss it, that's all.
Right, right, well, the senior center one we're holding off.
So the other one, so 12, we approved, we recommended Article 12, we amended it, so it would be 20, and then the other two are 22, which we just did, and then 27.
Which we haven't hit, right.
Which we haven't hit yet.
Which is, right, no.
Okay, so we just can't lose.
Can't lose, we, yeah, we'll go back and hit those. So Article 23, this is the yearly senior citizen and veterans tax work off abatement program.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 23.
Second. Okay, motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
At the, Article 24 is at the request of the school committee, this is acceptance of a non-resident tuition revolving fund. So non-resident tuitions, they'd be able to put in their revolving fund.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 24.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
This is Article 25, is authorization to sell 12 Robinson Road.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 25.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Article 26, so this was a citizens petition, and it's, it's to remove the use of plastic bags. So this is a, this is a non-binding article, which we.
Had the presentation on it.
We did, but the problem was, is the way that they sent the signatures to the town clerk, it, just what it says is remove the use of plastic bags, but it doesn't have all that backup information on, on what that means. So unfortunately, they didn't do it right. So the town moderator will decide whether he wants to allow this to be voted at town meeting, to take the temperature basically of town meeting, or to skip over it because it's not in the proper form.
So there's nothing prevents us from taking a position on it, but I would suggest maybe we wait till town meeting, the meeting before town meeting to decide what we want to.
Yeah, because if anything. Because Tim could withdraw this.
Right, and I think historically, usually we don't take a position on citizen petitions.
Um, no, but it's not the same, we can't, I just want to get that out there.
I thought, yeah. Okay.
All right, so now I'm going to go back to those other.
So Article 20, I think, was the transportation network?
Okay.
That's the new Article 20, and then 27 is the line item transfers, I think.
And had we done 12, we did do 12.
We did, we approved 12 and 22 because those were just amendments to.
Right, 12 was adding in the authorization to sell 31 Chaddock Street.
And 22 was the cell tower.
And that was adding in some language there on the screen with that arrow, right? And the new article was Article 20, right, Matthew, the transportation network company funds, yeah, you're correct.
So is everyone okay?
And the line items, yes.
Supporting that one? Move that the select board vote to support Article 20.
Second. Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
And 27 is the operating budget line item transfers. Do we want a recommendation on this, guys?
We could basically say.
Because we don't even know if we're going to.
Yeah, recommendation is pending, and if we need to.
We'll wait, that's one of those, we're not going to have the information until town meeting anyways.
Right, right.
Right, okay.
Right, yeah.
So do we need to close the warrant?
Now we'd be looking to close the warrant, yes.
Unless there's any other discussion?
Should we be closing it before, or do we leave it open until we have the Zoom meeting?
Well, you know, just in case something happens, if we didn't have a meeting, we probably should vote to close it, because you can always vote to open and close it that night if we want to.
All right, just don't forget to remind us to do that, that.
Okay.
I move that the select board closes the town warrant for May 2nd, 2022.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Woo-hoo!
All right, so we're at the, and we should go quick on this, the TA updates. The first item is to approve a contract for photovoltaic system, I might put solar panels, that makes it easy for everybody, for the Ruben Hor Library, the amount of 138,243. And Joe and, and our trustees, Katrina and Mark could probably speak more to her if you have questions.
And the board's packet is a packet prepared by Brian Forbes, our OPM. And it's rather detailed as far as what's the breakdown, as far as the work, has a copy of the contract language as well. So this is part of a earmark that was received by the, by the state, that the town received by the state. And I don't know if there's anything else I wanted to be.
So the earmark was 110,000 dollars, and where they're getting the extra money is from, you heard about lead money that's coming back? So they would use that money to complete the rest of this project, because there is a, 138 just for the contract work, but there is other, I think it was in your packet, it went up to 183,000. So the additional 50,000 or so would come from that lead money that comes back to the town.
If Katrina or Mark want to speak to that at all, whoever it is, just identify yourself again.
I'm a librarian, I'm a library trustee, you're all fine, Bart. So the con, so we have 110,000 dollars earmark to the state, the town already has half of that in the, right now. And they'll get another half once the work is in somewhere, some, somewhat approximately. We have the, the lead grant that we'll get back from MBLC will cover the extra. It is not allocated as part of the library building project, as part of the original. There will actually be well more in the lead funds from total than this, that will end up going back to the library project too.
Won't the solar bring us up to silver?
The lead, we, we expect, but we're not positive, the lead will bring us up to, the solar panels will bring us up to silver, which takes us from that 2% to 2.5%. So the extra half percent comes very close to covering the difference between the earmark and the total cost.
I apologize if you already addressed this, but what's the installation timeframe now if this is approved?
That's a good question, we don't, the contract will, Brian will be talking to the contractor tomorrow. And the question is just the lead time on getting solar panels at this point, as soon as possible.
Lead time, so to speak?
Yeah.
It has to, it has to be completed by June 30.
Well, no, the.
Earmark?
It doesn't, it's, we have to purchase the solar panels by then for the earmark. So we tried to do this, this is the second time we went out for bid. The first time we went out to bid was in December, and we put in penalties if the solar panels weren't on by basically the end of May. And no one would bid because they said, we can't get the solar panels, we don't know for sure we can. So we had to put it back out to bid, this company bid, and basically the town has to, I believe we have to front the money for the solar panels before they can be installed to make the earmark. We worked it out with town council and the state comptroller office or whatever it is on the process. But, yeah, we want the panels on as soon as possible.
Okay, hence, hence you need the vote tonight.
Yes, and, and from doing the solar calculation, if you go online and put in the size of the solar array and everything, it says it'll save about 6,000 dollars a year on the electric cost.
So there's, so who, what's covering the difference between the 110 and the 138?
The lead money that we're going to get back.
Okay, and that would go up to 185 if that total cost happened, all that would be lead money, anything above 110, okay.
Joe, is that contract my signature of the boards? Because if not, that motion just needs to say.
It says just, it says approved, the motion is just approve the contract.
But it might have to say, have the town administrator.
I thought, I thought it was.
Just wanted to make sure.
Authorize the town.
Authorize the town. Yeah.
Well, go ahead and might as well add that into the motion.
Okay. I move that the select board vote to authorize the town administrator to approve the contract for the photovoltaic system, solar panels, for the Ruben Hor Library with KRN Contractors LLC in the amount of 138,243 dollars.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
One further thing is PNBC will be overseeing the work, not the trustees, so they're well aware, they're, yeah.
Great, congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Moore, still your contact on that, is he?
Yes.
Good man.
So B is, is correction of the ballot for the second school committee seat. So I, you know, we, our town clerk got some misinformation from, from town council. So what we have to do in that situation, there's what, 15 days before the, the, the closing of when the forms.
Nomination.
Nomination papers are due, thank you, and because they didn't make that. So now we would do the process that we just went through with filling Board of Health. We would do a joint meeting with the school committee. So what, I'm anticipating getting that letter, the school committee's meeting Thursday, just to kind of stay proactive, to get this position going. Your motions to recommend a joint meeting, which I'll, I'll follow up with the letter back to them, letting them know that we're going to advertise for the position. The position will do the Wednesday before our meeting at noon time. And then invite the school committee, remaining members, to join the select board to appoint that school committee position.
And people would submit their application, just like they would for any appointed board seat, is that correct?
Just like they do now through the town clerk or our office.
And the term would be to the next regularly scheduled election, which would be the following one next year.
Correct.
It's only a one-year term, that's when her term expires next year.
Okay.
And again, since there might be people in the public who had thought it was going in the other direction, the difference here, highlighted by the Secretary of State's office, communicated to you folks, is that there has to be at least a minimum of a 15-day period for people who are prospective candidates to go out and get signatures and all the rest of that. And that's by the date of the resignation letter, the town didn't, didn't have that opportunity.
Correct.
What, two days, three days?
Two days.
Yeah, two days.
All right, you ready for a motion?
Yep, anything to add, Madam Quayle?
No, no, just, we've already spoken with the school committee, they're all, they totally understand, and we're just waiting for that letter to come so that we have all their signatures.
And I did speak with Superintendent Clancy last, at the end of last week, so he's aware of the, the date, so hopefully.
As long as everybody who needs to know, he is a little.
Will it be on the ballot? Will this position be on the ballot?
No.
No.
No, I mean, but I mean, you got the ballots changed before they went out to.
No, because you have not signed the warrant.
Ah, good.
Next meeting, you'll sign the warrant, she'll go out to the printer, get the ballots printed and.
Smart for you to wait until we sign. I moved that the board schedule a joint meeting with the school committee for April 25, 2022, to appoint a new member to the school committee to fill the vacant position until the May 2023 town election.
Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
All right, the last one is an update, it was requested from the chair, asking about outdoor dining. So those that are interested in outdoor dining need to apply just like they would through the ABCC. So they certainly can do that, and they would come before this board, and you can authorize for the outdoor dining. What you can't authorize is an increase in the overall total occupancy count, because that, that's a whole subject issue, right? So if any business wants to go forward, reach out to our office. Joe Ryan, now we'll take care of them, since they are on vacation this week and Dawn's gone, but we can help them through that process.
And is this, if I remember the memo correctly, the town only has the authorization to do this through what, the next year? By the extension of the state legislature, or it's only till the 2023?
It's actually expired now.
Oh, it expires April 1st.
April 1st, so there's, there is legislation that's pending, but that section is, was taken out, to my understanding. So they're basically, by doing that, throw it to every city in town to kind of deal with it.
Okay, so this is filling the gap created by that not happening?
Correct.
All right, gotcha.
So there's no motion here, you're just letting us know that.
There's no motion, it just.
I'm going to let the public know, too.
Right, yeah, Chuck had asked, he wanted the opportunity just to have that conversation to let the public know.
And we might as well, if we haven't done directly, since we have all their addresses for licensing purposes, let all the, I would suggest we all notify them all that it's available.
Yeah, I'm, Diane.
When she gets a chance.
No, no, she's, I'm sure she's already done, she's already, a lot of them have talked about it when they, when they were renewing, Paul, so she's kind of filling them out. And she does a great job of keeping in touch with them. So when she gets back, she'll reach out to them and let them know if anybody's interested.
Great.
I think right now it's, it's Ofono, I think, Taka.
Taka.
And.
O'Neil Cinemas in salute.
Yeah, in salute, so they've.
Can the other one up, up top, above Taka, have it too, the Great Road Kitchen, didn't they have?
I don't think they ever applied for it, I think that's what the memo says.
Well, Dianne says, Great Road Kitchen never submitted a request, but upon observation, I think they effectively did it anyway.
The tables and chairs are there, I can tell you that.
All right.
The tavern in the square as well?
They already have that approved, yeah, that, that, it's part of what they license it, that you approve.
Good night.
Okay, good.
Okay.
That's just a second copy of the IMA.
This is what you, you need the signature here, Chris.
I just needed an extra copy.
The last item is the.
Just one, one spot, Joe?
Yeah.
Last, not to take your position, is to approve the minutes of the March 14 meeting.
Anytime you want to move things along, I think that is okay by me.
Take it, one more thing.
All right, has the clerk had a chance, has everyone had a chance to read the?
Yes.
All right.
No, no, no corrections for me.
Thank you, Sue, another wonderful job, capture the flavor of things and succinct, make us sound smarter than we are.
Move that the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes of March 14, 2022.
Second.
Hey, motion's made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
All right. Anything else we want to talk about before we go? Move that we adjourn?
Have a good meeting tonight.
Second.
Yep.
Motion's made and seconded to a chair, made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, folks. Good night.